Sarah Bogers.
Yeah.
Harry Morton.
Here.
Can you more like?
Here.
Randy more.
Here.
Randy more.
Here.
Applicable agenda.
Second.
Second all papers.
Alright.
Community forums, anybody have anything? Shout your name later probably, right?
I was gonna just kind of update on Ag, but you got it on your thing.
Yeah, but I have another report that I can talk about. Yep.
Alright, three little minutes.
Sir.
Motion second all paper.
Alright.
Alright, approval bills for payment, any question? Questions on those?
Comments?
Sir.
Motion second all paper.
Alright.
Alright, financial report, two million one hundred and seventy-two thousand eighty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents, any questions on that?
Sir.
Motion second all paper.
Alright.
Start off with Brett.
I've got you guys a copy of the report for October. Homecoming's over and it's on to fire prevention week. And then coming up after that is the same week as Halloween, it's Red Ribbon Week. So, it's only going on. This week being short, we'll have our fire truck rides in our drill tomorrow and the assembly for our poster winners and all that. This year's theme is chain charge into fire safety lithium ion batteries in your home. So that's been the message that the kids have been talking about in class. Maintenance, no major projects going on. I know Cody and Kyle are getting ready for reading season even though it's been ninety degrees this week at one point. That's gonna come around real quick, so. Every month, I update you on our Character Strong pillar of the month, and this month is responsibility. So, we had our assembly last Friday and talked about respect from September and also responsibility for October moving forward. Every morning, if you're in the building, you're gonna hear the conversations going on in classrooms, they're having those and they're singing the songs and talking the talk and hopefully walking the walk too, so. Coming soon, the end of first quarter's coming up already. We will be scheduling our parent teacher conferences next week and that means report cards are gonna go home, waiting for conferences and all those will be scheduled. So, that's coming up first week in November and that will be here in full note. Celebrations, things that are going, going good in the classrooms. Fourth grade, they've been, and this sounds, sounds silly around me, is a tough skill and it's one that's totally hit on in the high assessments. So, they've been, they've been doing really good at that and that goes back to third grade as well. They hit that hard last year, so they're ready to go this year. Miss Smith's class, they've been working with Mrs. Nagle, that transition and not having our sped teacher in there's been going well. Even though Miss Smith's gone, there's been a lot of collaboration, phone calls, emails, facetimes. So, she's, she's off, but she's still working hard with Mrs. Nagle to get those kids what they need. Kindergarten math skills are looking strong on all their screeners. Again, that goes back to being prepared. One thing to note is the kids that are going through are pre-K compared to the ones that are not. I mean, there's, there's a difference there and there's nothing to say. I mean, some didn't go to school here, period, and moved in, but our kids, everyone through our pre-K program are showing that they're, they're ready to go. Third grade through fifth grade, their Open SIED, I know Chan may mention this as well, but they're, they're killing it with that and it's going really well. And the kids are engaged and learn a lot. Second grade math, two-digit addition, subtraction, regrouping, all things that they need to know, going very well. Music, they're working on their Veterans Day songs, third through fifth grade. And a lot of the little ones are, they're learning a lot of new songs and a lot of their stuff might have to do with like our Character Strong and just kind of the routines of the day and incorporating that into the music. And our new art teacher, shout out to her, she's doing great things and producing a lot of cool artwork and showing that off in the hallways, so. Try to bring you some of these good things every month from here on out. Any questions, as always, let me know.
Brett, do you have our Veterans Day calendar in schedule?
Um. Yep. I think it's the Friday before, that's what it has been in the past.
Okay.
So.
Like the A.
There we go.
A. It's Veterans Day, the eleventh.
I thought we were doing on the Veterans Day.
Well, last year maybe we were out for a few days, so maybe the Veterans Day is the eleventh.
It's the eleventh. I have people.
Eleven.
Okay.
We'll get you a time.
Awesome.
So, let's schedule it, or it is scheduled.
I wanna make sure I don't miss it. In the same format as us here, yeah. Work pretty good.
Yep.
Any questions? Brett, thank you for sharing, you know, every single great, good, nice deal.
Okay, on September seventeenth, the high school students enjoyed a speaker, his name is Steve Kemp. He talked about Better Choices While Driving, the group that he was through is called Better Choices. Steve was hired by the Iowa Public Transit and he speaks all over the world, but Steve was in a terrible accident and became paralyzed as a result. So, he's since gone on to be a two-time parent Olympian in curling. And he speaks to high school students all over the world, his, his message was very powerful. Our kids really resonated with it and then afterwards, they were able to ask questions with him and hold his Olympic medal, get pictures and things of that nature, so. It was a real powerful message, he talked for about an hour and the kids really, really got a lot out of it, so it was good, it was a good message. Like Brett said, last week was homecoming week, I just wanna give, make sure, give a shout out to our student council. Thought they did a great job of organizing thing and not, as always, with their hard work and preparation, it seemed to go pretty smooth. So, you know, that, it's always a good thing when you can enjoy that and have school spirit in the building and, but yet still maintain classes and whatnot, so. On October ninth, which is tomorrow, our juniors will be traveling to SCC for a college fair in Burlington. Always a great opportunity for our students to get out in the classroom and do some learning about post-secondary options, so that'll be good. Karen's also taking a group of health students.
Early childhood.
Early childhood, yep, there you go. And where are you taking them, Karen?
Uh, SCC to the lab there, they have onsite daycare, lab education, early childhood day.
One thing I wanna add on to that, Ms. Merritt and Mr. Horton are taking a lot of great opportunities to get our kids out and into these types of fields, which is just wonderful. They're going on Monday to visit Scott Queen College to CT programming and whatnot and taking a good size group with that as well, so. It's just another opportunity for our kids to, to kind of widen their gaze a little bit, so that's good. On October twenty-eighth, Miss Higgins and the Salazar and myself, we traveled down to Great Prairie in Burlington to start our plan for our district and career academic plan. Always something that, you know, we have to have done by the end of the year and we present it to the board and whatnot. And last year, our numbers jumped and they were higher than we expect to do that as well. And things that helped that jump are things that Ms. Merritt and Mr. Horton are doing, taking the kids out. We can then do some sort of survey afterwards and that goes into that type of reporting and whatnot, so that, it only builds that score even higher, so we'll continue to do that type of work. And then parent teacher conferences are around the corner, November fifth and sixth in our districts, so we're looking forward to welcoming in our parents and getting those types of conversations going.
Questions? Congrats on the state amendable and acceptable one out. Morning sun overshadows sometimes, but great. Of course, that's for him. Alright, Karen?
I have three different presentations to share with you tonight, so I'll try to go through them quickly. The first one is our Fall Fast Data. We've completed our screeners for both reading and math. For our kindergartners and first graders, they take a test called Early Reading. The kindergarten goes over those subtests, first grade goes over those subtests, so it changes from screening time to screening time. Some remain the same, but some of them change in and out. Our kindergarten scores, like Brett mentioned, both reading and math are phenomenal. So, the purple's gonna be above, proficient or above, and then the pinks are gonna be below proficiency. So, our kindergarten kids for the coming in, especially those that have gone through our pre-K program are right on where we want them to be. So, hopefully we'll continue to see those trends as we go throughout the school year. First grade, again, the test changes a little bit, we're adding some of those literacy skills, so it does drop a little bit. So, there's our first grade numbers, and I will share these presentations with you all when I'm done, so you'll have them to look at in depth if you'd like. Second grade through fifth grade switches to the CPM reading test. This is the measure of reading fluency and accuracy. The output is the correct words per minute. The belief is, is that if a kid can read fluently and accurately, their reading comprehension is gonna be higher, strong as well. Second grade scores, you can see four different colors here, so the deeper pink is kind of those high-risk kids, the ones that are not close to the benchmark. The light pink, they're a little bit closer, but they still have some risk. The darker purple are the kids that are proficient to where they kind of, where they need to be for this time of the year. And the light purple are those kids that are more advanced around that college. Third grade. See how the breakdown is there? Fourth grade. And again, that target of word per minute goes up with each grade level and goes up with each screening period as well. Fifth grade. Okay, then the sixth through twelfth grade also does fast screeners. We do what's called fast track reading, and there's two parts to this. There's the auto reading that includes the word identification, the decoding, matching synonyms and morphology. And then the A reading is more of our reading comprehension or a general reading test. It takes about thirty minutes, it's not very long for the kids to take, and they're kind of getting used to it now with the administration. So, they're, the very first time we did it, like the auto reading part, you have to listen to it, you have to have headphones because it says a lot of things, you have to choose the correct answers. So, they're getting better with that in taking the test. So, our sixth grade. The top one is the auto reading. And the bottom is the A reading. Seventh grade. Eighth grade. And they do, the A reading will break down into the more advanced pathway as well too, but I combined them all for this, for this. Ninth grade. Tenth grade. Eleventh grade. And twelfth grade. Okay, so shifting here then to math. Now, math this year through this date, grades K through six are following the same guidelines that reading does, where if kids are not proficient for two, or they're, they're still high-risk, which means they're not proficient for two screeners in a row, then they're required to have interventions and be progress monitored. So, we're starting the same protocols with math as we have with reading intervention. Provided through Trisha or through the classroom teachers at the elementary. At the middle schools, just the sixth graders, they're continuing their work on their iReady, MyPath, which they did in the elementary, so they're just getting a little bit more extra practice with math. And then the progress monitoring is done through a fast, a test called automaticity, which is kind of computation. It's quick, it's timed, they can't use scratch paper, it's more of like a mental math. Right now, that's only approved screener, hopefully that changes because it doesn't always match up with kind of what we're looking for. Early math, those again for kindergarten and first grade, so you can see the subtests that go along with that. And again, just like with the reading, those change from screener, screening period to screening period, some of them stay the same, but, but some of them change. Kindergarten shows again what Brett talked about in his report. Those kids are coming with strong basketball, we met with the kindergarten teachers earlier this week and they're very impressed with where they're at academically for sure. First grade. In second grade, in the past, we've done the iReady, MyPath, or iReady diagnostic that goes along with, along with our classroom curriculum. It's a very long screener test. We still have to do it, but the AMATH is a little bit quicker and they felt, the teachers felt like it kind of gave them some better data to, to do these interventions and whatnot with. So, we switched over grades two through five to use AMATH and it's what we use six through twelve as well. So, it gives us a broad measure of math problems, the questions are aligned to the common core and it is computer adaptive, so as the kids answer questions based on their answer, that will determine what their next question is that they get asked. Second grade scores. Our second grade teachers, not only in, in math, but also in, they're doing a lot of sharing for intervention, which is good, so the kids that really need help are going to the intervention teachers, but then those bubble kids, the second grade teachers and the third grade teachers are really working well together to share kids and, and do some more interventions in the classroom, so that's good to see as well. Third grade. Fourth grade. Fifth grade. And then sixth through twelfth adds to the AMATH, they also do that CDM automaticity, which is actually the, the progress monitor that gets done for our math kids this year. Again, the automaticity is a time test of math computation, no scratch paper, no, no calculators, and then the AMATH is that broader measure. So, our sixth graders for fast track, the A, the automaticity is on top, the AMATH on the bottom. Seventh graders. Eighth graders. This is a lot, maybe you can kind of say, this is, you have a large group of eighth graders this year, correct?
Oh, there's a lot of eighth graders.
Yeah. In algebra one, so this is a pretty, pretty high class for math. Ninth graders. Tenth graders. Lots of green for the math, just as well. Eleventh graders. And our twelfth graders. Twelfth grade's such a hard one to do because they're busy with so many other things and we do, our luck in the twelfth grade, we have a lot of kids that are doing the academies and whatnot, so it's kind of hard to catch them in the building sometime. But they're there. So, our next steps. Interventions are taking place at the elementary and at the middle school with those sixth graders. The elementary students who are par persistently at risk or the at-risk kids are progress monitored. We were told earlier this year, those that are just at risk, you don't have to progress monitor, but it's best practice too, so we're continuing to do that. It's happening on either a weekly or a bi-weekly basis. The winter screenings will take place early in January and we're continuing to work with Kara Beach, our literacy consultant. Amber Ernest is our new math consultant to help improve the core instruction in our interventions for students. Okay, so that's presentation number one, any questions about fast, again, I'm gonna share this with you.
How do you capture the folks that are at the academies? Do you, do you?
Yes, yes. So, for the high school, I used Ms. Boston's room to test because she has all the juniors for English and then a good chunk of the seniors. The seniors are the ones that I have to chase down the most, but they're usually working on the college class in Kelsey's room or I can find them sometime and just say, hey, we do this. And they're pretty good about taking care of it for me. So, yeah, that's kind of the easiest way to do it. Okay. The next one is about our average school performance profile, which Brandon touched on just a minute ago. Our scores came in here a couple weeks ago and we did well, once again. These are the categories that the state determines schools fall into based on their scores. Obviously, exceptional is the top category that we strive to be in and we wanna try to stay away from the priority or comprehensive. But anywhere acceptable, commendable, high performing or exceptional, we wanna fall in, in those and we have again this year. This is the elementary and middle school measures, point measures that they take. So, they look at the proficiency on, on our ISS tests in all those areas. They look at growth on the ISS test and on the Alpha Twenty-One test, and then chronic absenteeism has been thrown in there as well. The high school has all of the same measures as the middle school and elementary, but they add the graduation rate and the post-secondary readiness to the, the, what makes up the score as well. So, the elementary this year was again acceptable. You can see the past few years kind of where we're at, so we did dip just a little bit this year with our overall score, went from a four oh five to four hundred basically. But we're still real close to that state average and no support is required from NASA. The middle school was commendable. There's, our score raised over ten points from four sixteen to four twenty-seven this year, so a sixty-one percent. Still a little under the state average, but we're, we're making growth there. And I think our consistency at the middle school with our, our math and ELA and our science curriculums is, is paying dividends right here. And then for the high school, dropped a few points, but still in the acceptable range. That is sixty percent, again, just a little below the state average. And then this is the website that you can click on and you can go look more in depth at our scores, you can do the comparison with the other schools in the, in the area to kind of see how we fell out for that. So, we'll continue to probably talk about these as a leadership group, but we haven't talked about them at admin or, or instructional council or anything yet, but we'll look at those and. I know Tony mentioned the college fair that the kids are going to tomorrow and the stuff that Mr. Horton and Mrs. Merritt are doing and all of those things help us on our D cap, but then they also help us here because of the post-secondary readiness that we're providing those opportunities for the kids. So, that definitely was a big part of our score this year. Okay, the last thing, and then I promise I'm gonna sit down. Brett mentioned that our third through fifth grade is really taken off with Open SIED. We've had Tracy Jarrett, our science consultant in the district, several days already this year. She's helped the teachers kind of prep materials, get going, she's modeled teaching, which has been huge because there was a lot of apprehension about the vast information and activities and such that go along with this curriculum. But her being there to model and work side by side with the teachers has been invaluable. She's phenomenal and the teachers now are really starting to get in their groove with it, which is awesome because the kids love it too. So, the first third grade unit is about forces and interactions. So, they've been working on balance and if an object will balance and stand still, or if it will balance but still have some motion. So, they built these structures and they had to analyze them, they drew pictures of them, of their model, they did some noticing wonders, they've done some classifying of items. So, I just kind of plopped some pictures in here that the teachers have been posting, that they've shared with me of students and, and what they're working on. There's a lot of collaboration with these lessons. The third grade teachers have been working together, the two classes together along with Tracy Jarrett to kind of work through this first, first couple lessons. And they've been doing a great job. I was in there yesterday with them and there were a lot of kids in a small space, but they did a phenomenal job with it. Fourth grade is working on energy transfer and collision, so why doesn't objects' motion change? And their first activity was like kicking a soccer ball back and forth and talking about the, the motions of the soccer ball. So, they got to go outside and, and do some, some kicking back and forth. They drew some models of what they did. I think Olivia's is up.
I do see that.
So, just, and different, you know, they're all three, all three of those are different based on what the kids, but they're all right, you know, it's, it's what the kids are observing and what they're, they're picturing in their mind and then transferring to the paper. They answer questions, they have a driving phenomena that they answer questions to, they do notice and wonders. I mean, we're turning our kids into scientists and this is awesome because they're really, they're not just sitting and getting information, they're doing the thinking for themselves and figuring things out. Good trial in here. Fifth grade probably has one of the creepiest units to start with and it's ecosystems and matter cycling. They have built nurse logs. If you don't know what a nurse log is, you can see the, the bottom picture there has like a container and there's some dirt and some moss and some logs and some bugs in there. And they were really freaked out about it at first, but the kids are loving it. So, they, this slide has a picture of their initial model. All of the Open SIED, when the very first unit of, of each grade level, they make classroom agreements. And basically, it's like, if you're in a safe place to be a scientist here and to make mistakes and that's okay. And so, they come up with those classroom agreements together. There's some more up close pictures, you can see some of the bugs in there. Yesterday, CM Smith was using a tongue depressor to move things around and look for the bugs because she didn't want to touch them. A lot of the kids are brave and they'll touch the bugs for the teacher because they don't want any part of it, but it's, it's great, I love it. CM actually had she a couple of bugs die and so we had to get some new ones sent to us. Again, they're doing noticing wonder, they've got their phenomena that they're taking notes on. Fifth grade, yesterday in, in Mrs. Smith's class, they had some stations to rotate through, so they did some actual observations of the actual nurse logs that they'd built. They looked at some pictures of other areas where there are other parts of the, the nurse log, but just the pictures of them. They watched some videos on a computer to take some observations and take some notes. And then today, she took her class to North End Park to find some of these things out in the actual environment. And she said they loved it, said they did a great job, they found things that they were observing in kind of their controlled environment as well, so it was neat to make that connection happen in the real world. So, that's all I have, any questions about Open SIED or?
How long do these lessons go, like this open log, like is it?
They take a while. So, like this first, this is, this first unit, I think there's like nine or ten, maybe twelve lessons for like the fifth grade. And it takes them two to three days to get through one lesson. I mean, it's built for like a sixty to ninety-minute time period, which that's, you can't keep, you know, you gotta break that up.
Right.
In the time that they have in the afternoon to do so, so it's gonna take them a while to get through this. The hope is that we can get through two whole units this school year and then two more next year.
So, they keep like these nurse logs and continue to watch them?
Once they're done with this unit, they are to get rid of them immediately in the light. Or keep them or whatever, but yeah, they're gonna grow mushrooms pretty soon too.
That's why I was wondering what was next, like that figure there.
Yeah, they're gonna grow mushrooms next.
Very good.
Yeah, but yeah, so there, there are four units for each grade level. So, the hope for this year is that we can get through two of them and then next year, the next two and then keep going through, so it's good stuff.
I like it.
Thank you.
I, most of the stuff I wanna discuss with the board, they'll come up later in the meeting, so I'm not gonna waste your time with that right now, but I throw a couple updates. I'd like to give you, number one, homecoming week was quite the success. Obviously, won the football game, which is always great, but a lot of school spirit this year. I'd say in the last couple years, the most I've seen in quite some time, so kudos to, I know Kelsey spends a lot of time putting that stuff together, so. Kudos to her and her crew of kids that, that put a lot of that together this year. Postseason schedules will be coming soon, girls volleyball gets released tomorrow at three forty-five. The state's gonna do something a little different they've never done before, they're gonna have a link on their website and click on it. their website and click on it. They're gonna have a release show, kind of like the NCAA does for the uh March Madness, big tournaments, you know, they're gonna try that out this year for volleyball and see if they like it. They're gonna continue to do that throughout the year. Um so that's supposed to go live at three forty-five tomorrow. I don't have the link yet, but um I'll probably get it sometime tomorrow, I imagine. Band, state band is gonna be um October eighteenth and it will be at Davenport. And it will be at ten AM for us, so we'll take the field at ten AM. With that also, uh the seventeenth of October, uh if you're around town and the weather's nice at the complex, we're gonna have a district-wide um pep rally that day. Uh it's a it's senior night football game, but also we wanna recognize the volleyball team, we're gonna recognize the cross-country team in front of as many of the younger kids as we can. There are some field trips that day, so we're not gonna catch every elementary kid, but uh we got cross-country volleyball, marching band, football, we're we're gonna just introduce them all to the kids as well as we're gonna have the band play the marching band comp or their uh their sets for the marching band competition uh on that day as well. So they're getting an extra practice in because they will perform that night as well, but then they'll also Saturday morning, so they'll get three performances in a pretty short period of time. Uh that's gonna be nine o'clock, that's our plan right now, which Mike doesn't know yet, so I think we have an admin meeting, we have to push that back.
We'll link it up.
We'll link it up.
Um outside of that, uh just when and if you guys uh approve the the scoreboards tonight, I wanna publicly thank the athletic boosters for taking care of those, so uh they deserve recognition for spending that money to upgrade our facilities, so.
All right, uh the last big power outage we had a few weeks ago, uh we had a lot of power surge at the high school and that fried the computers for our HVAC system. The computer was from two thousand and eight anyways, but um kind of a, we're in a time crunch right now to work with the insurance company and follow on. It's a six to eight week project to get it back up and going. Um as of right now, I have no control over any of our units, meaning I can't turn heat on, turn the turn the air down or whatever. So I got a quote from Train, which is what we currently have, and another quote from Woodman Controls. Um the thing with Woodman Controls, if we can go into their their method because we're gonna have a lot more control over our systems. Uh Train has pretty much locked us out of their software where like Menace can't diagnose anything, they can't go in and and do anything. With Woodman Controls, we can, Menace can go in and actually fix a lot of things on that part rather than paying Train like seven hundred dollars to come down here for a visit. So um we're just working with the insurance company and hopefully we'll be able to pull them off. Then another issue at the elementary is the doors to the classrooms. Me and Kyle have went through and trying to make sure they at least close for the time being, but one thing I'd like to do in the near future is uh go to metal with frame or metal door frames. That way the swelling isn't so bad and the doors can actually close. But as of right now, I think all but two close pretty well and Shaker's gonna do some monitoring to at least get us locked in the time being. So I'm gonna get some quotes to see what the door frame would cost to replace and maybe do one hallway in one year to focus on another hallway in the next. Questions?
All right, you have my report for interview and the first thing, and I'm glad she's here because I'm gonna brag on her a little bit and probably embarrass her, but as you know, we have been without an in-person ag teacher and that is is not good for our kids. Karen has taken the step, she has obtained the emergency certification to teach ag. So next semester, she is going to teach two ag classes for us. One is abroad-based animal studies and one is abroad-based plant studies. So our kids are going to have a live, in-person, qualified ag instructor next semester, so Karen, thank you for doing that. Not only does that help our kids in the classroom, it will allow our FFA to function fully because we will have a live person teaching ag classes. Now, saying that, we're still working to secure an ag, an FFA advisor, but steps, we got took care of this, now we can focus on the next one, so once again, Karen, thank you for doing that. It really is much appreciated. Reminder again, the IASB convention is coming up in November, if anybody would like to attend. Uh the new open meetings law training, this was newly passed last year. IASB has several options for newly elected board members to fill that training requirement. If you are already elected, you are not required to take the new training, it is only for newly elected board members. Um our school board election is November fourth, so that's gonna be here before we know it. Certified enrollment, uh you take a snapshot on October first and then you have until October fifteenth to get things finalized. Again, I said last month and I stick to it, indications are that our enrollment should be steady. I'm gonna have you flip over right now and take a look. You'll see that our head count in Power School went down, but it also did last year. Um in September, we still have a lot of kids where we don't know where they are. Um and until we get a records request or we know where they are, we don't take them out of the system because we've been burned by that in the past. We take them out and then all of a sudden they show up. So by October, we usually have a fa- a pretty good idea of where kids are if they aren't with us. And so that's why we will see that dip. Then I have our legislative people on there again and my schedule for the upcoming month. And that's what I have.
Questions for?
I don't have any questions and I also wanna thank Karen for doing that extra little bit to to get these kids looking needed to continue on with their ag education in person in class. It's super, super important.
All right, personnel, hires? Questions on those?
So Miranda's no longer subbing, she's moving to Vera.
Correct. That's where she's been functioning. Is it during the background?
I made the motion that higher one through five.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consideration approved list of proposed finals. Uh you got quite a few band choir doing a high sale, food and tennis classes doing Edwood Locker Meat Sale. Gar's country's doing Greets, Virginia Lins. NHS, junior high student council is doing a concession crab show. They're almost doing some kind of bingo at that senior night football game. Girls wrestling, online donation to beef jerky. Basketball, and I assume that's both, Brandon, does that both boys and girls or? Roar submitted with, is it different what is it? What was it for? T-shirts?
Uh that's just boys.
Just boys. And girls wrestling has apparel to restore.
Need motion approval?
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
All right, you've got two sets for this one. Your first batch is part of your regular policy rotation. Language is up to date, I have no recommended changes. If you're okay with them, I would ask you to approve them.
I'm gonna motion to approve board policies to eleven through two fifteen.
Second. Motion second, all in favor? Consideration approved amendments.
All right, as part of your quarterly update, IASB is recommending some amendments to our policies. The first one is what used to be called ad hoc committees, now they're just calling them board committees. Um they're spelling out the difference between a standing committee versus an ad hoc committee that's formed by the board. The next one is our equal employment opportunity one. Our old language said that we had to take affirmative action in the major job categories, um women, men, minorities, persons with disabilities. Um they've realized that different parts of the state have different demographics and so having a one-size-fits-all plan isn't always the most feasible. And so the language now says the district will unify utilize standards that are based on the population of the district community. I think a much more realistic approach that recognizes that different parts of the state have different populations. The next one, uh used to be smoking, drinking drugs, now it's just generically student substance abuse. And it adds nicotine products, again with tobacco, trying to stay one step ahead of the ever-evolving world of substances we don't want kids to have used. The next one is emergency planter drills. It spells out quite clearly that you have to have four fire drills and four tornado drills. Two in the first half of the year for each kind and then two of each kind in the second half. And that's it.
Make motion to approve amendment policies? Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Consideration approved, establishing junior high soccer program.
Yeah, I mean, we've obviously talked a lot about that, so I mean, I'll answer any questions you got as best I can. I've written my recommendation in my notes to you, so you can go from there.
I saw, maybe I missed it, but what what was the amount of donation you were looking for?
I think when I talked to you, they they said between four and five thousand dollars, that's what he told me. And I would think that that would be sufficient to help get the uniforms going, we'll figure everything else out, balls, you know, that kind of thing, we have some, so it's really comes down to equipment costs. I would suggest that that donation, we would take it and allocate it to the junior high program so they have started money by uniforms out of that and then leave that money there. That would just be my recommendation.
So need that to happen before this happens on the financial side?
I mean, to order uniforms and stuff, I would like to see that happen, but.
Can you tell us what the startup was?
It was around county coaches and all that kind of stuff. It could have been up around twelve thousand dollars. I think that with that donation, if we have enough money to pay the coach, the rest of it, we can, we'll be okay. I don't think it's it's gonna come down to coaches. I had figured in two coaches, I believe. I'm gonna recommend that if you do this, you give one. Which is gonna reduce that cost as well, so junior high coach is gonna be around probably seventeen hundred dollars, guessing. Probably about three to about thirty-five hundred to four thousand dollars to get the uniforms going. And from there, we'll be okay. I went through how many soccer balls we got, we'll be just fine there.
What's the sustainability of this program?
That's a great question. I think the sustainability comes to if we have to make any cuts, we're gonna have to obviously look at that first along with a couple of other smaller programs. Uh that's what happened to girls wrestling this year. It was not on its own, it was coupled with like five, six other things to get to a larger number. That would be my concern and that would be, I don't know the financial side of like how much money we do or don't have to add appropriately, obviously. My suggestion would be if, you know, Eric's looking at numbers and goes, you know, this isn't sustainable past three to five years, I wouldn't even consider it because you're wasting money on uniforms and youth wasted their money to give us a donation, so.
I really have serious concerns about our student body head count and the activities. I I get it, like we have a high school soccer program and we wanna have this soccer program, but I just I I have a hard time, like there's a lot of kids that don't want for sports anymore, like it's hard for me to get behind adding a brand-new program when we personally, I feel like we have plenty. And we're always talking about money.
Right.
And we're always talking about our athletic budget is tight and we don't have this and we don't have that. If it's gonna cost us twelve thousand dollars and we're only getting four to five from the new soccer program, like that's a lot of money. It's a lot of money for us.
Yeah.
As a district.
Yeah, it's been one of those things, it's been hard for me. I've been back and forth on it. I mean, I've talked to you about it a little bit, I've talked at the board meetings about it. It it really just comes down to whether or not we can afford coaches and stuff. I mean, the rest of it, I hate to say.
No, it doesn't, because it's more money than that. It's sustainability every year. It is more than that. I I just can't, I can't.
So how many of the conference teams did you say?
Six.
Six.
So we're included in, what did you say, seven?
That would, if we join, that would be seven and that would be a full schedule. In other words, that's the maximum number of games you can play, I think six, seven, something like that. I have it on my computer. Yeah, sorry. Whatever that maximum number is, I can remember if it's twelve or six. If it's one time through or two times through, but regardless, that would give our conference enough to schedule just conference schools.
And then we, are we gonna try and piggyback them like we're doing JV and junior high football, we go along with girls or boys?
We would sure try, but it's gonna be awfully difficult because the the problem you're running to there is whether or not officials can get there. Because you're gonna wanna try to use the same officials for every game, obviously. Uh and some of those schedules are gonna be put together by the conference itself, like how are we gonna do this and make it work for everybody? So we're not gonna have full control of that. I don't know what that's gonna look like because the conference itself does not support junior high soccer at this point, I can I can tell you that. The 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 illusion is that the conference supports junior high soccer. It's not there yet. Uh it's kind of like girls' high school soccer right now does not have a conference per se. We as ADs have made the decision to piggyback the girls' games on the same night as the boys' games if both schools have both teams. But they don't have a conference championship, they don't have an all-conference meeting, you know, girl's soccer's not there yet, so.
I personally feel like if this was a conference sport, that we would have a different conversation.
So the other six school districts, they had established a junior high program and they
Who are these?
Payed potions for it.
I had the list a couple of months ago, but it was like
I wrote down, I
Holy Trinity.
I wrote down Middletown. Uh Hillcrest maybe?
Yes, Hillcrest.
Danville.
Yes.
Central Lee.
Yes.
And then I, yeah, Big Prairie.
They have paid coaches? Where they have volunteered.
I didn't check on all of them.
I quit writing after that.
But I know that the two or three that I did talk to, yes. It's an actual, for them, it's a junior high program.
And I'm I'm speaking for the, Adam's the president of the of our group, but we're not gonna be able to supply it for five thousand dollars each year. You know, you still gotta think pre-K through through six, fifth. We have to fund all that and do everything. That's it, it would be a one-time
Yep, so then
Donation, I mean, so you talked about sustainability, you're not gonna get four to five thousand dollars every year. There'll be some type of donation, I'm sure, but.
Not in that hefty of it.
Right.
Beyond one year though, you can take out the four to five thousand dollar uniform cost. Now you're back down to six.
This what happens with the uniforms is after the four to five, let's say we get the uniforms, it's four thousand dollars first year, that money's gone, okay? At that point, that gives me five years to get the junior high soccer program into my rotation of uniforms and budget that out versus oh, we got a new program, go spend four or five thousand extra dollars that you didn't plan on. I mean, those uniforms are budgeted out. I have a set number of amount of money that every year I try to say, this is the amount of money I'm trying to shoot for. Um and I keep them, I mean, I keep them in five years, like you may not feel like you need a uniform now, but if you don't get it now, you're not getting it for another five years, what's it gonna look like in five more years, you know, that kind of thing. Um so we are always trying to stay to that budget, so adding four to five thousand dollars for uniforms right now is not sustainable or even doable for me this year. But if I look at it, you know, five years from now and I have time to budget that out and put it into my rotation and change that, yes, I could do that. They're gonna have to have things like goalie gloves, I know that, you know. There's there's some things that the high school has that they can pass down that we can use for practices and stuff at this point, but in general, for me, I agree, sustainability, that we have to consider that, that is I don't wanna start a program half of one year and then get rid of it and we just bought four thousand dollars worth of uniforms.
We also need to think about what we're, like what we're doing to our children, like you've got football, soccer, track, baseball, softball, volleyball, club sports. Like it's it's also more too, as in we're here talking about education, like we have to think about all those things as well and the financial side of it, like.
They have a choice to go out.
Yeah, well, they're they're going out for
To be a part of something or a part of this.
Remind me again, maybe I misunderstood, what's your plan for the uniforms for this year? For junior, if this passes, what's your plans for junior high uniforms?
To order some.
To order them.
I think you're gonna
It's gonna cost you four or five thousand.
It'd be around four thousand dollars probably.
I mean... I mean, for the sustainability of this, to see if this is gonna go somewhere, I mean, is there other option to be able to not have to, I mean, is there a standard uniform we have to order? Or can we go out there?
When you talk, when you asked me to look at other options, I did. Outside of buying like super cheap, you're, you're not saving a whole lot of money, and my concern was, do I wanna spend the money and turn around and have to buy them anyway? And then I'm wasting money, you know what I mean? Like, that's where I have to think. Like, can I go buy a T-shirt? Yeah. But you're gonna have to have one-one T-shirt, because some of the teams you play are in the same colors. You know, we have that problem with junior high football right now.
So what's a, what's your standard uniform that costs you for a uniform?
I, I have a spreadsheet that I gave you guys, but I'm...
My DSA girls' uniforms cost you about seventy-five dollars, very short, very shorts, and a jersey.
Is that reversible jersey?
My goal would be, my goal would be reversible jersey.
That would be all.
I think that's an option for soccer. If basketball, they do have, some sports they do, I could not find one for soccer. That's not to say there's not one that exists.
It's seventy-five percent, you can have one pair of shorts and buy an extra shirt.
That's how I have it set up, two shirts.
So can we buy two sh, two T-shirts and kids just wear a pair of shorts? I don't know what we're allowing to do.
You also have to have your soccer socks that match too, which are cheap like five bucks.
Do you have to, or do you want to?
That you have to have soccer socks to go over your shin guards, and they have to match?
And they have to match, okay. Yeah, see, I, I don't know these.
Okay, just a question. You know, all, all kids that play at that level now, they have to buy their own socks and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, at school, we can't buy our socks.
Our high school would buy their own socks, they, I think you buy the more expensive socks, you could get a pair for like five bucks. You buy a cheap pair.
So could we look at doing a T, like, how much money would that save? Even two T-shirts?
Just some of what we have made.
Probably much less than seventy-five dollars.
I'll just be honest, for me, and, and I can do that, Ralph. But I, my feeling is, if, if you're gonna add a program, you do it right.
Yeah, we're not nickel piecing it together.
That's just my, that's just my feeling. If you're gonna add the soccer program, we don't tell those kids, every other junior high team is in my rotation, and I bought them all ready uniforms, and I think there's only like two teams left that get them next year, but we're gonna give you guys a, a T-shirt. I'm not, I'm not okay with that. That, I don't think that's fair to them. Now, if we wanna test it out with a T-shirt, fine, but then we're another year down the road, and now...
I mean, but junior high baseballs wore T-shirts, correct me if I'm wrong.
You're wrong.
Yeah, they were.
They have in the past, but they have jerseys to wear. There are jerseys in there to wear, they have actually...
I'm just, I'm just going off of my kids'...
Yeah.
Or T-shirts.
Yes, correct. When I took over as AD, the first thing I did is started buying junior high uniforms, and they've all been slowly replaced as fast as I can get through, junior high football next year, I think, is maybe the last one, I think, or if not, I'm really close to having them all through at this point. So yeah, my goal is to get rid of that T-shirt thing, because I felt like that looked like, for our kids, we're saying, you're a youth program, like, I wanted to make them a program with the school, give them something that to be proud of. Now, they do buy their own pants for baseball a lot, because you can't keep up with those things. But that's just my feeling. I mean, obviously, you guys is, are, can direct me to say, hey, go, go buy T-shirts and a pair of shorts, and I, I'm glad they do that, but I just feel like, if we're gonna do it, we do it right, and we take care of the kids the way they're meant to be taken care of, otherwise, you know, I just kinda feel like, what are we doing with that?
So Eric, you have a spot, financial wise, what are we looking?
You can do it this year, but...
We might have to cut two.
Because emptying rooms, we don't...
Right now, we're...
I can't give you a good answer on that, because there's a lot of schools including our own, the data's not out there yet, so...
We're down students right now?
We'll do that until next month.
Correct.
You can kick the can down the highway, but...
Do I think you could? Yes, I think you'd be okay to do it this year, but just knowing that...
That's with the donation?
Yeah. Now, if you didn't have that donation, I'd say no, but...
My recommend, my recommendation, I'm not opposed to this, and I totally one-hundred percent agree where Karen's coming from, but I also know we gotta kick that can down the highway one more month, unfortunately, to find out what our certified role, it's gonna be because...
Do you know of anyone that...
My questions are gonna be the same.
I know they are.
Interested in...
And my thought might be the same as well, but if we've got to shut it, if we know we're gonna have to cut...
I just can't.
Well, I, I think I, I think I can get somebody. But until that job's posted, I'm...
Yeah, yeah, you can't.
Adam, did you apply for another grant? For, for family?
I mean, we're sitting here talking about keeping our school going, like, I can't, I just can't.
Yeah, I, I think we can comfortably assume that you're not going to have to make significant cuts this year. I mean, all of the indicators are that you're not gonna have to do that. However, take a look at the sheet that I, that I gave you, we're gonna be losing fifty-five seniors this year, our biggest class by far.
What's our junior class?
Our junior class is forty-four. Yeah. Now, our history is, we always tend to gain kids as, as they progress through high school. I mean, our high school classes don't start out the size they are now. But that fifty-five, that's concerning.
Yeah.
Because after this year, they're not gonna be here.
Yeah, it could be thirty, thirty-five.
I, I just, I'd point that out, because I would not be doing my job if I didn't draw your attention to that.
And I'm gonna tell you what, our conversations about cutting staff's gonna be a hell of a lot harder than whether we add junior high soccer.
And maybe Adam, when you talked several months ago about this, I mean, the other option is, there's really no option other than playing Columbus Junction for five weeks in a row, or whatever it was.
Yeah, yeah, that was a Columbus Junction and Wakeout, so it wasn't great.
But there was at least some option versus nothing at all if this one's out.
I'll just be upfront with you all, but I don't take offense to whether we do or we, we don't do it. Like, I'm doing it at the direction of the board, wanting to, meaning to gather information based off of a inquiry from outside the school district. Don't, you understand that whatever questions you have, or if you think of things that you wanna ask me before the November board meeting, please send them to me, I'll get you answers before I come in, so I'm prepared to give those to you, you know? Like, hey, you know, maybe I'll, I can go get some T-shirts and shorts ideas or whatever, but I think it's gonna help me answer your questions if I have those ahead of time, so feel free to, to send those to me. It's not, it's, seriously, it's not gonna offend me at all. I'm, I'm doing what I was directed to do, which is find all the answers I can, give you the best information I can, and then you guys make a decision on that. I'll do the work to make it happen if you say yes. I will not if you say no, that's basically what it comes down to.
I agree with you one-hundred percent of our kids, we don't need to piece things together. Like, we, we're gonna be a school team, we're a school team, and so, one-hundred percent, but I still have, just, I just can't. I can't, in good faith, make that decision for this school district.
So you wanna table it?
I'm wondering if you have a...
A motion to table this?
Or you wanna table it?
I don't want it to die. I would like to make a motion to table this, to see what our certified, we'll know next month, or next meeting, and then...
But just remember, we still have fifty-five kids right now.
No, I understand that.
So what, how are we doing with the other programs, like, you know, with the girls' wrestling, and the, you know, where we put in saying, you know, if we don't get enough kids, we're gonna not have a program? Where are we there, is everything still, I mean, I don't think we...
Well, we've never actually, I don't think we've ever said, if we don't have enough kids, we're not gonna have girls wrestling, but we did explore the opportunity to combine with somebody else, or whatever. I will tell you that those conversations are extremely hard to have, because we obviously have a brand new wrestling room, and it would be very hard to ship our kids to another school, and right now, none of the, none of the schools that I've talked with are willing to come this way, so it's kind of a, if we came to that, which I don't think it will, we have, I think, a decent number of girls wrestling, I would say eight-ish, maybe more, but I'm saying eight to be conservative. We would have to have those conversations. I mean, I'm always willing to have those conversations with any sport we have. The one thing that we have that's really hard, Dave, and I'll, I'll be honest with you, it's like this in a lot of sports, you have a whole lot of kids, then you don't have very many kids, and then all of a sudden, you have a whole lot of kids, then you don't have very many kids, and I don't wanna panic and go, oh, no, be like, we should combine with somebody, and the next year, we have twenty kids out, you know?
I think those conversations were about, you know, coaching, you know, hiring...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Kind of coaches, and then say, okay, this, this isn't gonna fly this year, we're not gonna pay you the three kids, we're...
Oh, yeah, I got you. I think the, the one thing that we run into hard time with that is probably junior high, because you, you do have seventh grade, eighth grade, but sometimes you don't, you just have the A-team, but also, I think that the conversation we have there a lot of times is, I don't wanna cut those unless we absolutely have to, because I, it's hard to leave one adult in charge of fifteen kids, and you know the world we live in, it's, it's good to have two adults there for, for a lot of reasons, safety and so on. But if we have to get to that point, that's a conversation I think we do have to have, but I think it's gonna involve all of you, or some of you, and me, probably Mike and Eric, to figure that out. I do have numbers written down, yes, from when we had that conversation a few years ago, I recall what you're talking about, but most of our sports have not reached that at this point. I would say that, for the most part, a lot of them have been pretty sustained.
Well, I think junior high is probably the toughest.
Yes.
High school's one thing, but junior high, I think, across the board, I don't care what sport it is, I think it's, the numbers are just not there with the amount of kids, so you add one more sport into the mix, is it a good thing? I mean, I would love to do it, if the kids wanna play soccer, I say let them play soccer, but, you know, I kinda get caught between a rock and a hard place if you have financial issues to deal with.
And they're still gonna play soccer for the youth.
Exactly.
And, you know, maybe we talk about like the scrimmages with these schools that are technically at six, instead of just avoiding them, see if they wanna scrimmage, just for some of them.
Do you know any numbers, Adam, roughly, what your numbers would, the numbers would be, just based off of, because now, you know, obviously, they have an option like track, or run track.
The last two years, they've had twenty-five, twenty-eight, seventeen graders, you know, twenty or so blockwood kids, eight or so adolescent kids, and I would suspect we got a pretty large group of the best seventh graders this year, so we should be in, in that amount.
I believe it's eleven of the blockwood kids have also did track, for, for your crossover number, of the twenty, whatever, eleven of them were in track, I think is what I had as a number. They did not count adolescent kids, I don't know if any of them were, were not.
Well, let's decide on something.
I'll say I have a motion to table it.
Okay, your motion is second table, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consideration approved, Russell, here, position.
Obviously, a position that we cut a couple years ago, or before last year, right, was, it was not officially a school program last year, someone funded it for us. I would recommend we bring that back, it's, it's relatively inexpensive amount of money, we already have uniforms, it would, they're, they pretty much self-fund anyways, fundraise for, you know, going to state and staying in hotels and food and so on and so forth. So I, I think, if, my number may be wrong, Eric, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the number's sixteen hundred dollars.
Did we have a lot of interest in this over the last year?
From kids?
From kids?
Uh, it'll be four to six, that's what it...
I know six is the number, I mean, you can have more than that, but...
Yes, there were, there were kids who were wanting to do things like fundraise this summer on behalf and so on and so forth, this came to me about August when we got back to school, but it wasn't a program, so we couldn't write off, like, yeah, go fundraise on behalf, you know, as part of the school, until a program was back.
Will you be supplying them any funding for, like, if we have a kid that makes it to the state tournament, like, as far as, you said it, it will all be self-funded, fundraising?
They, they purchased their hotel rooms, and I hope with food. I don't give them three meals a day, it's usually they pay for a meal, I pay for a meal. So yes, there will be some costs there, but it, it's not like thousands and thousands of dollars, and that's been in my budget before, so I know what that looks like.
This, this was cut through the budget cuts.
Yeah, yeah.
And I saw it last year, I mean, it was, it's a good thing.
I don't have it around, it's, it's been around for a long time.
I'll make a motion to approve Russell's junior high position.
And you have somebody that wants to do it correctly.
That was gonna be my...
Guess I'm gonna have two to three that wanna do it.
I would imagine, I know who, but...
It's gonna be opened up like any position, and we'll go from there, like, I think I'm gonna have two to three, so...
And once again, with the notion of if we have to make cuts...
Oh, yeah, it's...
Because I think I just heard Sarah say that.
Yeah, no, it's, I'll, I'll be honest with you, there's...
Yes.
Ever since we did the cuts the last time, I was very unprepared for those last time, being honest with you, that caught me really off guard. I do have some things already in a plan if that ever came up, what I would have to do, or I could do with the least impact. Obviously, this is something we're bringing back, but that is also something that could go away.
Could go away.
I mean, and that's, I think we all know that.
Is there a second, right?
Oh, second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor? Consideration approved, SBRC request.
Eric, you have a question?
So we got two requests to the school budget review committee, one is for special aid spending, so we had last year just a sheet under three hundred thousand in excess spending over what we got in receipts. So what we're doing here is trying to go back and capture the authority, we'll devastate the budget, how many wanna levy that cash back, because it is all property tax, but my recommendation, Mike's recommendation, to re- get the authority back at this time, and that, that's this step. The second one is for excess EL costs, so you're a language learner program, we don't have a teacher, we do a pair of that helps out, and so we only were spending that by seventy-six hundred dollars, so these will be separate motions, but I would encourage you, but let's at least get the authority at this point, and we'll talk about the cash.
All this for sure. And we've done this every single year before. All right, the first one, special education spending, two ninety-one, four, four, zero point five one. Need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion second, approve that, all in favor? EL excess costs, seven thousand, six, three, five, point five two. Motion second, approve that, all in favor? All right, consideration for iPad for SPED.
All right, so you've had a request from elementary SPED, they've been using iPads with their younger kids, great kindergarten universe?
Uh, in the classrooms, yes, so, but for SPED...
For special ed?
Yeah, we're talking, used as communication devices.
Okay.
I mean, there's more program appropriate for the SPED students, so that's where, we're talking five for each room, they have a kid wise, some will be dedicated to individual students, others are shared, to the day, so...
And the ones that they aren't currently using are waiting on their shelf life.
But obviously, to be able to put special applications on, absolutely.
Yeah, and special ed funds were used for this, so...
And just so you know, this is the kind of purchases that drive that special ed center, but it's one area we can go back and recover the funds, so...
So we would recommend that you approve this purchase.
I'll make a motion to approve the iPad purchase for SPED.
Second, motion second, all in favor? Consideration approved, purchase of baseballs off those four years. Roosters, wanna spend some money?
Yeah, Jenna, would you like to?
Sell some more iPhones, that's all.
I think, just, and you can piggyback, but I think as a, as a group, like, it's time for us to put some money back into the, our assets here in, in, you know, get to twenty-twenty five, so...
And we really wanna focus... And we really wanna focus on bigger projects, what can be our next goal, what can be our next work we help out next, we make a, a bigger impact first, a thousand dollars here and five hundred dollars there. What, what can be our focus, so this was kinda what we decided to have our next approach and.
And see how it goes, yes.
I think it's good, I mean, the people also donating, I think they wanna see stuff right now, to see stuff what it is, so.
Yeah. Well, and for us to continue to get donations, I mean, you gotta, you gotta show results, so.
I hope you, the new scoreboards would be great.
They look terrible, don't they? They look terrible. I'll say it out loud.
I'll admit it. Mike knows one, why not all pain, whatever. Yeah, that's a good thing.
Roosters are gonna reverse district or run, that's gonna get.
And once, once the new ones come in, then we'll surplus the old ones and decide what to do with them, but they're both in working order. Uh, so at that time, if you decide, hey, let's try to sell them, we can try to do that, if it's, hey, let's donate them, we can try to do that.
Does anyone, can we control it too?
What's that?
New, new ones.
The new ones are supposed to come with all new controls, so they won't be working.
You have to take a project without a goal.
Where, like, when we took down the ones in the gym, we could let the controllers go because we were using, using them, so, um, those who did work when they left the gym, these, these should be in working order when they come.
It said the control cable does not cover it though, is it the same cable?
There is no cable. They're all wireless.
So the outfit that these were purchased from actually installed too then?
No.
That's not part of the cause?
No.
Do we have an installation?
We're gonna work with Roosters on that, I think Shaker's gonna help out some, but I told Joe when they first started talking about this, that let's have a conversation about the scoreboard, and we can get that through. I think if they're willing to spend nineteen thousand dollars, we can surely, you know, the installation, so, so, sunflower looks to yellow color, gold, huh?
Well, it is for, it is for, under this company, so the, this, so here's the deal, our yellow pantone, whatever, yada, 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 there's some such thing.
Yeah, I, yeah.
So, uh, so one company, it's like athletic gold, one company, it's sunflower, one company, it's.
Saw it, I was like, I zoomed in.
Uh, if you look at the, the, if you look at it, the, the numbers and letters are, or the, uh, the part that lights up, all the, all the numbers are gonna be white for the softball one. That was the goal of the baseball one too, cause the white looks really sharp, however, where our, I went out and double-checked and where that board is squared off and left centerfield, it's too much towards centerfield, we're gonna do amber lights on that one, which is what they have now. Because if you did white and it did happen to be too bright, it's gonna be a white baseball with white lights, and that's not gonna be a.
Correct.
A good thing, so we have changed, that part of it is the only thing that's changed, we, we are gonna do amber lights instead of white. Uh, the metal reathing that we have currently there, we do not wanna move that, cause that's all the electricity ran there, those are really good holes, and it's the appropriate size for that scoreboard, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion second, all in favor. Thank you again. All right, next meeting, Adams?
I have, the junior high soccer's gonna come back, we're gonna. If you think of things.
Shall we talk about the playground situation at the elementary, it's something I have been ongoing hearing about.
Is it the, the buckling of the, what do you call it, rubber mats or whatever, the structure?
Yeah, and then, thought we did get, it wasn't, I don't think it's, like, going over very well, and just like, what is our?
Long-term plan.
Long-term plan for the playground.
Next meeting time, Dave?
Uh, second Wednesday will be November twelfth. Football will be over to you, go back to six o'clock, if that works.
Might not be.
Oh, god, I thought.
Turnitin's for done, done, done.
What is the?
Stop with us in the dirt.
No way, no way.
Okay, is the state tournament for football?
Uh, week before Thanksgiving, the building stuff are going on.
Oh, really? We're going all the way, then, let's assume.
Six o'clock would be fine, so it'll be down by then, so.
By that time?
We would be out of practice, unless we go to the lights.
I don't know, the last thing I need is reminding you to be out there assuming the football team tomorrow.
Too late, too late, it's already, too late, don't do this.
Don't.
There's lettering in the paper.
Don't do this.
Super intended.
Don't leave the heading in the paper.
No, maybe not.
Six o'clock.
What day?
Most of it's much complex.
Hey, that's my birthday, make me a cake.
I will.
You can remote this.
All right.
So six o'clock, twelve o'clock, sir?
Twelve at six.
Second, all in favor, motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
You're skeptic.
Pulling on it.
That's, that's all, babe.
You're in my bad ear.